My name is Barb Hedrick. I'm with the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. And welcome to the candidate forum for the Cass County Commission, District Five. We have three candidates in one position open. We'd like to start by thanking the City of Fargo for providing the always lovely City Commission Chamber for this and for the staff who are recording this, streaming it both live and recording it for playback on the City of Fargo's government PEG TV channel, TV 56. And the recording will also be available on the League of Women Voters Red River Valley YouTube and Facebook pages, so you can look for it there. Along with the League of Women Voters tonight, our cosponsors are the AARP in North Dakota and Hawthorne Neighborhood Association. And our volunteers tonight include Sandy Seidler, Tiffany Ross, Corey Edgerton, Maureen Johnson, Bailey Stickley. These individuals and organizations make this evening possible. All these sponsors organize these candidate forums, provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. As League of Women Voters North Dakota President, I now must give my specific pitch on the League of Women Voters, if you don't mind. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League or other sponsors. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media purposes. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. With our friends at the Foreign Communications, the League of Women Voters once again this year is putting together what is known as votefor11.org. You will see some handouts about that in the back. This is statewide and has information on candidates answering questions across the state for anything that you might be voting on. This will be going live tomorrow afternoon, I am told. We're very excited about how many candidates have already posted their answers to the questions that are on there. And there is the ability for any remaining candidates who have not done so to please add their answers to the questions. And also to those voters, please check it out and find some answers to at least a few questions, perhaps on some races you're not familiar with, those who are running. It also helps you get a personalized ballot. This is the rules for this evening. Questions have been submitted in advance by the public, either online, or a few have been submitted this evening. I have them here. I will just read them as they are. They are screened for any duplication and to make sure that there is clarity as much as possible. All candidates will be given a chance to answer the questions. We will start tonight with two-minute opening statements from each of the candidates and then go to the questions. And each candidate will have one minute to answer the questions. Even if a question is specifically identified as being directed at one candidate, all candidates will be given a chance to answer. You will see the timer up above the clock there that shows you how much time you have. There's also some lights. Yellow is your warning light. Red's an obnoxious bong goes off. Try to just finish your sentences as quickly as possible. And then we'll move on to the next person. So if everybody is ready, we will start with opening statements. And Keith Gottes, you will begin this evening.
Okay, I'm Keith Gottes, a lifelong resident of Cass County. Born and raised on a dairy farm between Mapleton and Castleton. Other than college and grad school at Grand Forks, the university, and a short teaching, a couple of years of teaching in Oregon, I have been a resident of Cass County. Married with, we had three daughters, unfortunately. Sadly, the oldest one passed away four or five years ago. And my two other daughters are both involved in the medical profession. One's a nurse at Broadway Hospital in Fargo here. The other one is a pharmacist with Sanford Health System. And Mary, my wife, was a forty-year veteran of the nursing staff at Dakota Hospital and eventually at the Roger Maris Cancer Center. So I've had a long association, our family and myself, of being involved in Cass County. The candidacy of mine is being fueled by, you know, the fact that I am a rural resident out there and longtime board member of the township that I live in, Durbin Township. And I've served in the Central Cass School Board for three terms in the 2000 to early 2010s. I've been active in church politics and active in the present-day planning and zoning with the Cass County Commission. So my candidacy, probably I bring that kind of experience to the table.
Now you've shown everybody how obnoxious the dong is. Joel Vettel.
First of all, thank you. And I want to say thank you to League of Women Voters for hosting this event. And thank you for the other two candidates. Your ability to put yourself out there and run for any office is always a tremendous thing, and I applaud you. And so first off, I am Joel Vettel, longtime resident of Fargo and in Cass County. I spent over twenty years in public service, twenty of those in law enforcement. I have a family of my wife, Sandy, and two daughters that are currently, one in high school, one in college, Kennedy and Taren. And I get asked this question a lot, why I'm choosing to serve? And it really dates back to something that my dad said. And my dad was a farmer in a small farmstead in Trail County, North Dakota, and that's where I grew up. And he said something that always stuck with me. And he said, "The best gift that you can give to yourself is to be in service of others." And I've held that true. And I feel that anytime I can help in a variety of ways within our community, whether it's being a leader, a follower, a soldier, a person that's willing to step up and really contribute. And oftentimes, the saying is, "Things get solved by those that show up." I feel that extremely true. And one of the things I've always said that I will do is give back to a community, really an area that I feel passionate about. I feel this is one of the greatest places in the world to raise a family. And I've always said that I want to give back as much as I can and leave it a better place when I leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Johnson.
Also, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of Red River Valley for hosting this and the other two. I'm a lifelong resident of Cass County. Went to school in Wapping with a degree in ag business. Been married to my wife for thirty-seven years. We have two grown children. And just like Keith's, we had a family setback in December, and we lost our son unexpectedly. But have two great-grandkids and have run before, 2016 and 2020. Took second, and I really came out really close in 2020. But my issue is, if I get elected, it's not going to be about me anymore. It's going to be about the people of Cass County, we the people. And I believe that when you're a commissioner, I don't care if it's city, county, or what, you're working for the residents, all residents of Cass County. And I want to be a voice for them. I want, you know, if they're having trouble contacting their other commissioner, I'd welcome to have them come and see me and just all work together. I mean, if you have differences, you leave them at the door and you work with the people that you're working to come up with a good idea or something for Cass County. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll start the first question with Joel. What is your number one concern for the people of Cass County?
You know, one of the things that I've stated since I announced my candidacy is that I really, and I spoke to it earlier, this is one of the best places in the world. I hold that in my heart. This is why I chose to raise my family here. I stayed here because of the quality of life, the things that each and every day, being safe and secure in your homes, providing opportunities for people to grow as individuals, working together to create incredible amenities for our citizens. My service on the park board for twelve years spoke to that. My time in law enforcement spoke to that. And it really speaks to my core issue, is that we are seeing things in our communities that are disappointing. And I think that there's times where we look to, in history, and say, "We've got to take a stand on some of these issues." That's why I think it's important.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, what I'd like, you know, they've been screaming lately for removing property taxes. I can see working to lower them, but we cannot just demolish them because if you ever look at your tax statement, there's a lot of fire departments, schools, and everything. And the next question is, where would we get the money there? But at least listen to them and see if they come up with some ideas. Plus, balance out the economical growth. I mean, I know we have three big cities in Cass County, but we have about five middle-sized cities that are growing at rapid paces and, you know, kind of just equal everything else so everybody gets a slice of the pie. And basically, listen to the voters, the citizens, and work all together.
Thank you. Keith?
I think the biggest concern for me is the growth of Cass County and the, let's call them, challenges and the problems that it's going to come with it, is that it's an economic engine that's being generated. And it brings into play, in order to grow, you've got to have the services provided to draw the workers, the people, to it. And like Marty said, that brings in property taxes on the rise. So how to balance those issues, you know, to make it rational? The growth has got so many, you know, things associated with, whether it's taxes or affordable housing, things like that, that the Cass County Commission has really got to be on top of. That's what I think the number one concern is, the economic growth.
Thank you. For this next question, we'll start with Marty. Social services play a crucial role in supporting vulnerable populations and promoting social equity within our county. How do you plan to strengthen and expand social service programs such as housing assistance, food security initiatives, childcare support, and services for seniors and people with disabilities to ensure that all residents have access to the resources they need to thrive?
Well, it's a loaded question. Thank God, I'm a retired person, so I've kind of seen it from a broad perspective of all my life. And yeah, it's a sticky situation because we've gotten a lot of people coming from foreign countries to move here. And daycare is a problem. And, you know, you almost have to just lay everything out on the table and then just say, "Okay, we have this much budget to work with. Let's see if we can at least give each something to keep them afloat or even find new revenue that we could add to this and work it out the best we can." I mean, we can't just say we have, we can give a hundred percent to everybody because, you know, unless you've got a crystal ball, it won't work. But at least help everybody somewhere along the line to feel like they're getting something out of the deal.
Thank you. Keith?
Social services, I'm kind of focusing, the first thing, on, you know, the elderly providing for that in our baby boom generation retiring, getting older and such. And then the hard thing to realize is that those places out like Good Samaritan out in Arthur, and their housing facilities in Buffalo and Tower City, I know for, you know, some of the older people, they don't exist anymore. Because of economies of scale and such, it's forced the consolidation of those services for older people and so that they are going to end up in Fargo. But we have to, you know, provide for the whole. It's all the services across the whole age spectrum is definitely a priority.
Joel?
Certainly. First off, taking care of those in the most need and most vulnerable in our communities is all of our responsibility. At the end of the day, we're a community. I'm often drawn to the statement that a friend of mine used to say, "It takes a village to raise a child." And it's no different with the people that are most vulnerable. And we need to continue to work hard to find those resources to do it. And we, government can't do it all. I'll be honest with you, social services is stretched thin. We know that. We need to continue to find great ways to service that population because they deserve it. And whether it's our elderly, whether it's folks that have other challenges, mental health, a variety of things that are out there. But most importantly, we have to look within. And what are we doing? And I look at some of the great charity works that are done each and every day in our communities, great work with like organizations like Meals on Wheels. Those are the things that are critical for us to succeed.
Thank you. Keith, you get to start the next question. Should Public Health be a division of the county?
I think that's accurate there. I always believed, in general opinion, as being that the closer that those services are to the people. I'm a strong believer in local, whether it's a school board or in this case, the public health, it belongs in there. But I realize that it's a, you know, three, the federal government's aspect in the mandates and such, and then the state is then put that responsibility on local government. But it seems to me that the closer it is to the local services, thus the public health belongs with the county.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, I echo that. My service as, currently my employment in healthcare provides me a unique opportunity to see the needs that are out there within health in general. And certainly, when you look at the works they're doing at public health, those are critical. They need to get done, and people have a right to that level of healthcare. And I agree it needs to stay local. I agree that it needs to stay where it can be managed in an effective way that really services the community and services the people that really need it. And so having that, the eyes on that ball and be able to really connect with the people that they serve is best done at a level where, again, it can be articulated well. So, thank you.
Marty?
Also, I'll agree with the other two people. You've got to keep it to the local government because if it gets to the state or the federal, there's so much red paperwork with time they dig through it, you never get an answer. And like I said, just see how much is available out there and help the people who really, you know, the public health, they don't have health concerns, most of us do. At least give them a break to take care of themselves, you know, and make sure they're healthy. And like I said, I think it should be done by the county and at least, and it's local.
Thank you. Joel, we'll start with you with this question. Transparency and community engagement are essential for fostering trust in local government. How do you plan to ensure that county commission decisions are made with, as transparently and inclusively, with opportunities for minimal input and feedback from residents? Additionally, how will you communicate with constituents to keep them informed about county policies, projects, and initiatives?
Thank you. You know, in my work as the Public Information Officer for the Fargo Police Department for eight years, I dealt a lot with the media and was a spokesperson for a large police agency. And one of the things I strive for every day is being as transparent as possible, providing as much critical information as I could to the public, because I feel it's truly important. The best thing we can do is inform the folks that need it. And that was sometimes a difficult task because we were dealing with issues that sometimes were very sensitive to our investigations and often sensitive to the families that were involved. But I felt that it was extremely important to make sure people were aware, but more importantly, people were educated in those subject matters. And I feel the county commission is no different. People are smart. They get it. They'll understand it. But they need to be provided the information in a timely fashion, so they make great decisions. And that's the important part. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, I really believe we need transparency countywide, and it's been lacking for a few years. But what I really would like to see is, we have our meetings at three-thirds, and it's tough for them to do it. Why couldn't we get a program together and have quarterly meetings at different locations about every three months and have the people come and talk to us, you know, for an hour or so? And, you know, and it'd be a pilot program, but at least it would give the residents an extra tool in their tool bag to seeing that we're being transparent with them and hoping to get feedback from the local citizens.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, transparency in government is very, very important. You've got to be honest, above-board, communicate very, very well, and keep the public informed on the issues and what you're thinking. Being a longtime basketball and football coach, I always figured that, you know, I wanted the players, you know, their input. And I think that was pretty important to, you know, success on the athletic fields and such. So transparency and being on board with, you know, the people, very important.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Marty. Mental health is a significant concern for many residents, with issues ranging from access to services to destigmatization. How do you plan to address mental health needs within our county, including increasing access to mental health services, supporting mental health education and awareness programs, and collaborating with local organizations to provide comprehensive support for individuals and families?
Well, as commissioners, I'd like to have the people come to some of our meetings if they're having problems, so we can be aware of them upfront. And then just do the best we can to get, look at the programs available and help these people with mental health. But also, family members are going to have to come, you know, and support us also. And then we can work as a team to figure out what would be best solutions for each individual or groups.
Thank you. Keith?
The mental health, you know, hits close to home with me that I am a guardian for my cousin. His mother passed away here several years ago and schizophrenic that is, lives in a group foster home in Morehead. I absolutely know the necessary support that's needed from the fam, not just the family, but the community as a whole, is to make his, you know, life as rewarding as it can be. So there's major, you know, amounts of resources that have to be channeled toward, you know, that type of person. And so, close to my heart, the care for provision of mental services.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, mental health is probably one of our biggest issues that we're dealing with in our nation right now. The pandemic through COVID certainly highlighted and exaggerated a lot of those issues within our communities. And being in healthcare and also being a former law enforcement officer, I've seen firsthand the end results, the tragic results of people going untreated. And one of the things we talk about a lot is how do we affect that? How do you affect change in our rural areas? And there are some great programs that we have initiated within healthcare, but more importantly, within communities. And one of those is utilizing technology in our rural areas to actually bring a person, a caregiver, a psychologist, to an active law enforcement scene and have that person talk with somebody. Those are the types of initiatives that are truly, are truly critical to solving this issue.
Next question, we start with Keith. How do you plan to address affordable housing challenges within the county, ensuring that all residents have access to safe and affordable housing options?
I attended a couple of months ago, time, I guess it was last summer, the MetroCog, and that was the main crux of that meeting there. The number of jobs that are going to be brought into Fargo-Morehead at that. And the need for affordable housing was very, very open out there. Also, Fargo's development, you know, really with the diversion, it's developing the challenges of that. And I left there, there has to be rational decisions made, some tough decisions made. They're not only in the hands of the developers, but overall planning of how you're going to deal with, you know, the workforce that's going to come in and provide homes for them.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, when you deal with an issue as broad as dealing with trying to find housing and then also overlap that with issues involving workforce, they seem competing, but they're actually identical issues that we have to handle on a very, very well-thought-out plan. And I think that's where we have to get back to. Where oftentimes, we look for blame in these issues. We look for folks to say, "This is who caused it." Really, we have to come together and find solutions that are going to work for everybody because we know people are coming here to work. We want people to come here to work. And one of the basic needs that they're going to have is housing. And if we don't solve that issue, we don't come up with some active solutions now, it's only going to be, get worse. And when you look at the studies currently right now with workforce, we're not going to have enough people here to do the jobs that we need in twenty years. So we have to continue to take and actively recruit people, but they need housing.
Thank you. Marty?
Housing has always been a problem, but like you said, we have to come up with a solid plan and invite people. And if we're going to invite people to come work in our communities, we have to have a plan in place so it runs smoothly. Is there going to be issues? Yes. You know, but if we can get ahead of this and work as a commission with local housing people and, you know, contractors, maybe we can come up with something suitable that it will work if we just have a solid plan.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Joel, and we're continuing on the housing topic. As housing costs continue to increase, older adults are unable to find housing to meet their needs when seeking to downsize and thus are being pushed out of communities and homes that they lived in for generations. What would you do to ensure the creation of affordable and diverse housing options such as accessory dwelling units, duplexes, courtyard apartments, and townhomes?
Yeah, and again, we get back to that idea that housing is a critical issue, but especially for our seniors. We know that we, as a community, not only is it the right thing to do to keep our elderly in their homes, it is financially responsible as communities to do so. Because if they're there, if they're being cared for through areas like Meals on Wheels, if they're having access to their homes, if they're able to get to medical services through some of the transportation needs that we can provide as a community, that keeps them in their home. And how do we keep them in their home? By making them affordable. You look at those tax incentives that we talked about and trying to, again, incentivize folks, especially our elderly, to stay where they're at, to be comfortable in their own homes that they've lived in their entire lives. And they should never be forced out because of economic reasons and because they're taxed out of it. And that's where we have to look for realistic solutions and incentives to keep them there.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, something like that with elderly, I'd really like to see a program where they can stay in their homes if we can give them breaks on their taxes. You know, they've been paying taxes since they were nineteen, twenty years old, and now when they come to their, have to be forced out of their homes. Or look at some of the towns, what they have to offer for viable housing. Or look at some of the towns, what they have to offer for viable housing and stuff like that. But look at all the options before they have to leave their home or, and help them because everybody will get that same help as you get to that age. And if it's a workable program, you could have something there for an extra 70, 80 years.
Keith?
This is a situation that has developed in time, a couple of generations ago even, going back to my grandparents, you know, they would, you know, live and die in the same place and such. So now with our changing society and, you know, the workforce and the families, you know, men and women working together, and it's put a lot of pressure on older people. And it, like the other two men up here, it's very, very important to keep older people as comfortable as possible, and that means keeping them in a setting that they're familiar with and such. And so whatever we can do as far as, you know, there's tax incentives there and family responsibility ends in, and try to work with those two things and, you know, keep those people in their more comfortable setting.
Thank you. Next question, we start with Marty. Americans over 65 are the fastest-growing segment of the population in the U.S., and research shows that most want to remain in their homes and communities age. Have access, having access to safe, walkable streets for people of all ages is an important part of that. What would you do to ensure that transportation options are varied, safe, affordable, and user-friendly?
Well, being that age, it is a problem and do studies and find out what's available because like I said, if you're living on the edge of western Cass County and they want to stay in there, we'll have to look at what they have in their, you know, facilities around. And I think the smaller communities, you get volunteers from communities I know and kindred. We've offered rides to senior citizens if they need a ride to a doctor or something and, you know, and get them there safely back for it. But like I said, in Fargo too, we're going to have to, or West Fargo, the Horus is big, we'll have to come up with ideas, what we can get safe, reliable companies and see what we can put together for some of these senior citizens.
Thank you. Keith?
Support for public transportation, whether it be the city or the county, very important in this aspect of providing for over 65. My wife is a part of the community of care that is out of Castleton, and Marty referred to it as very rewarding. What they've tried to do is make sure that, you know, keep people in their homes by providing rides to do necessary medical appointments and such. And it has been a very rewarding thing for the people involved in that process. So just overall, public transportation, the community as a whole, charity, you know, should be a priority.
Joel?
You know, it's, it's really, what I've seen and what I've experienced is, is seniors today are extremely active and far more active than they were in past generations when it comes to being out walking, staying active, staying fit. And we talk a lot about the transportation. And transportation, when you talk about the great things they're doing at Valley Senior Services and other rideshare programs, public transportation, all extremely important. We have to talk about walkable communities within our, some of our neighborhoods, making sure people are able to get out and really experience that, be able to utilize transportation, bikes, walking. Those are critical issues. I see Arlette Preston in the audience, and she's been an advocate for walkable communities in our, in our, in Cass County. And I think that's just as important as talking about rideshare programs, public transportation. We want to make sure people are not only able to get places, they can do it actively.
Thank you. This is, will be the last question, and I kind of like this as a last question because it gives you one minute to answer what is fairly broad stuff that you might have put into what will be a one-minute closing statement, so now we can sort of have a two-minute closing statement, just broken up a little bit. And we start with Keith. What inspired you to run for the county commission and what specific goals do you hope to achieve if elected?
Well, my, I mentioned in my opening statement, the impetus to get involved, you know, came from, you know, support out there in the rural area. And so that, just the overall idea of coordinating between the rural and the city is very important in my mind, is that road systems connect both ways. The farm-to-market, you know, idea out there in the rural area of getting the crop, the produce to the markets also opens avenues to get into the city of Fargo where they do their shopping and attend those kind of events. So the fact is that those services that are provided, you know, the pressure on property taxes, you know, I really think that we've got to have, you know, a fair assessment and make sure that's always in mind, that those property taxes are keep it fair.
Joel?
You know, for me, again, I mentioned service, and I'll continue to mention that, but I do have alternative motives. I have a young family, but my daughters are getting older. And I know they're going to make life choices, where they're going to live, where they're going to raise their families. And I want to make sure this community, this, that Cass County is the best place it can be for them and for their children because I truly hope that we can continue the great quality of life that we have in this community. And, you know, I'll get back to that same backbone when it comes to the issue of quality of life. What does it come down to? It comes down to being able to feel safe and secure in your homes, having opportunities each and every day that you can take and, and find the amenities that you need to feel a great experience each and every day. And also, again, access to healthcare, all those things that we have here, we just need to continue that success.
Thank you. Marty?
Well, I said, like I run in 2016, 2020, and I wasn't going to run this year, but then I started listening to some of the people, and they were just looking for someone that in my neighborhood is, I'm Norwegian, country boy, and I use common sense. And I think if we could bring common sense back to the commission and make it a diverse commission where you have input from outside of Fargo, outside of Horus, and listen to those people and work as a team and, and just work for the betterment of Cass County. We live in the best place, I always said there and said out west is better because it's better hunting. But I said, Cass County is viable, and if we can keep working together as a unit and helping everybody get a slice of the pie, we'll probably have counties asking us what we're doing right.
Thank you. Keith? Oh wait, we started, did we start with you? We did. Okay. Closing statements begin with Joel.
Well, first off, again, I want to thank everyone for coming. You know, the political process is, is a difficult one. The old saying that the two things you don't want to be seen made is, is saucages and laws is very true. But the work that we do is extremely important. And for me, I want to get down there and really do the work. And I think oftentimes we get caught up in talking points, we get caught up in, in not necessarily the important issues. And really what it comes down to is communicating with people, having active and responsible debate, and then coming up with good common sense decisions each and every time that we look at issues. And for me, it really is personal. I want to make sure that I continue to do all I can to make my home the best place. And so I thank you all for coming tonight. I thank again the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. So thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
What I'd really like to do, going on, getting signatures and stuff like that, I ran into a group of 21, 22-year-old people, and they took my picture and they wanted to know what I stood for. And I said, well, first off, I want you guys to come and vote. I want the 30 to 35 people to come and vote. Increase people's voting because those are the futures 30 years from now. And the working class, the retired people, I want everybody to know we have the right to vote, and it's your voice, your choice, and let's work together and create a top county that other counties want to come and see what we're doing right.
Thank you. Keith?
I guess I too would thank for the opportunity. It's been 10 years since I retired from my teaching career, and tonight I'm kind of reminded of that question that come out all of a sudden from a kid, and it made you think on your feet. So I thank you for that opportunity to kind of remind me of my teaching career. But I, I decided to take on the responsibility of, you know, representing, you know, the rural idea there. But I also realize the importance of, you know, what's going on in Fargo-Morehead because I've only, you know, my wife worked in Fargo all those years in the hospital settings. So, and that's what I hope to bring with my candidacy is the understanding we're in a partnership together between the rural aspect and what's going on in the metroplex.
Thank you to all the candidates. Thank you to the members of the audience, everybody who wrote questions. Thanks again to our volunteers, our cosponsors, AARP North Dakota and Hawthorne Neighborhood Association. I remind you all once again about vote411.org, find out more information about these candidates and others, or contact them directly. Those of you here asking questions tonight, and I'm sure they've got places you can contact them again later to have as informed voters as possible. I want to finish, as I always do, with a special round of applause to the candidates. Our democracy requires participation, and that participation must begin with those willing to give their time and effort to, to run for office, even in these times where things are not always so pleasant out there. And I thank you very much for that, and I hope you all will join me. We're going to take about a 20-minute break and start with the city commission candidates.
Thank you to all the candidates for joining us for the Fargo City Commission Forum. This is hosted by the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. My name is Bailey Stickney. I am currently serving on the League's Board of Directors, and I will be your moderator for this forum. This forum is being streamed live and will be recorded for playback on the city of Fargo's government PEG TV channel, TV Fargo 56. This recording will also be posted to our website and our Facebook page. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. We are a membership organization open to all eligible voters. If you would like to join or learn more about us, you can do that at our website or on our Facebook page. I will take a moment right now to highlight our 2024 voter guide that can be found at There you can find your polling location, you can get personalized ballot information, and compare the candidates who are seeking your vote. The guide will be published tomorrow, and I want to take a moment. Let's give this group a round of applause because they have all completed their profiles. Thank you so much. We would also like to thank the city of Fargo for providing this beautiful space and the super helpful technical assistance for this evening's event. And to all of our volunteers greeting, taking questions and rewriting them so I can read them, really lovely group. We also have some sponsors we'd like to thank. AARP and the Hawthorne Neighborhood Association have been super helpful this round. So thank you to those two groups. Now, I've got to talk about the rules. Questions have been submitted in advance by the public online and in person here tonight. Questions may be screened for clarity or combined with other similar questions, and I, we don't have unlimited time, so I might not get to every question, but we do our best. All candidates will be given an opportunity to address each question. If you, in the audience, think of a question, you can grab a postcard, and if you need a pen kind of at the front door, there are volunteers that can help you do that. If you have a question ready, you can raise your postcard up and someone will come grab it from you. Each candidate will have one minute for their opening statements, and then for each question, they'll be allowed one minute to respond. At the end of the question and answer period, candidates will be given another one minute for their closing remarks. There is a clock on the wall that you guys can watch for how much time you have left. And when it gets down to zero, there is going to be a pretty loud beep. Sorry about that, but it does help us keep people on track. You can certainly finish your, your sentence or your thought when, after, after that beep, but please do your best to, to wrap up. All right. Thank you to the audience, and we appreciate your consideration in maintaining a quiet room so that all candidates have an opportunity to answer their questions fully and in a timely manner. Now, oh yes, I also wanted to say, we do have, there are seven candidates running for two seats, but two candidates were not able to make it. That is Nathan Pollan and Michelle Turnberg were unable to make it tonight. So let's get started with opening statements. We'll start with Arlette, if you're ready. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Arlette Preston. I have been on the city commission for the past four years, and prior to that, I did serve on the city commission between 92 and 2000. I also was on the school board for four years, and I have a nursing background, owned a business for 16 years and owned and operated it. It was an in-home service for the elderly. In my past four years on the commission, I worked on increasing transparency and responsiveness of our local government. With my efforts, the financial management of the city has become a bit more open, especially to the commission and thus to the public. And it's still being worked on, so it's, it's a work in progress. Affordable housing has been a concern that I have been working on quite diligently. It's, housing prices are getting out of reach for people, whether you're renting or owning. So yeah, I'll look forward to the questions as we go along.
Thank you. John?
Thanks, everybody, for being here, and thanks to the league and to the sponsors for this opportunity to, to speak to the people. I'm approaching my third term if I get through June 11th. On the commission, we'd be termed out after that. There'd be eight years already and looking for another four if I'm so fortunate. I had eight years on the school board before that. When, when I ran in 2016, in my opinion, at that time, the biggest issue was the heroin opioid crisis, which I would say Fargo hit the ground running, and I was very involved with that. For example, there's Narcan everywhere right now. For example, we have medical assisted treatment now. These are things that didn't exist back then and that I helped champion. When I ran in 2020, my campaign slogan was, "I'm going to lead the effort to settle the diversion lawsuit." So we get flood protection in place, and I did that. So I look forward to delivering ongoing. There's nothing new I'll promise, except that I'll do my best.
Thank you. Delson?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Delson, and thank you for having us today. I, I was, I grew up in the north Fargo area, and I intend local schools. From there, I went to Concordia, and then I wrestled for the Cobbers as well. After graduation, I've been in sales, law enforcement, corrections, coaching, nonprofit. And today I own two barber shops and a barber school in the region. I'm an, also an assistant wrestling coach at Concordia, and I am board president for Legacy Children's Foundation. My main core issues are workforce development, public safety, and strategic growth. I am asking for your support because I thrive on challenges and I'm here to improve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Hi, I'm Anna Johnson. Some of you might have seen my murals around town. So I've been living here in Fargo for the last 17 years. I'm an alum from NDSU. I have, I currently serve on the Arts and Culture Commission. I have previously served on the Native American Commission. Commission. Instead of focusing on platform, I really want to highlight the perspective that I bring to the table, which is that of a blue collar truck driving teamster. And when you look at the agendas and the minutes of the city commission, there are a few common themes like taxes, incentives, resoning, infrastructure, and all that. My promise is in advocating for what is best for Fargo. And my privilege is to represent the residents of Fargo, and my responsibility is to be constantly in communication with those residents so we can grow this city in an empathetic and equitable way.
Thank you. Al?
Thank you. My name is Al Carlson. I've been a resident of Fargo for 54 years. Graduated from NDSU, I was a teacher at Agassi Junior High for six years. In the summertime, I sold real estate. And in 1980, my wife and I, Sharon and I, started a construction company, first Sun Builders and then Carlson Construction. And we've been building properties around the city of Fargo ever since. I also spent 26 years in the North Dakota Legislature, 10 of those years as a leader. You know, this is a job interview. I think you need to bring a skill set that I have to help lead Fargo into the future. I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. All right, John, we will start with you for the questions. If you could only focus on one thing, what do you think is Fargo's greatest need at this moment?
I would say that behavioral, social health issues, addiction issues, and that whole lane of getting people assistance so that we're not putting all of the burden on these challenges of people on the shoulders of our law enforcement. You know, we talk about heroin and opioids. We talk about, you know, meth deaths. If you take those two deaths alone, the scale of them, then you add them up. We have more alcohol-related deaths in town. And I'm not saying people can't drink or whatever, but we need to be smarter and more responsible with our community culture and allow people to grow in flourishing and get help when they need it. And help people's children and family members when they need it. I just think this is a really pressing, pressing issue right now with the overdoses, with the deaths, with the cost to society, the cost to the families, the cost to people's personal sense of self. I just wish I had a magic wand and I could address that right now.
Thank you. Delson?
Yeah, this is one of my main core issues, so public safety. So I'm just piggybacking a little bit on what John said, but I do believe there's a mental health crisis going on. And there was a consultant from Milwaukee that came here a couple months ago and talked about the housing first authority. And I do believe if we focus on getting them a house first and then help solve, that will help solve a lot of those issues. Because what's going on right now is a lot of those guys are dealing with mental health. They're just going back into the jails, and then it's just revolving doors. So how do we figure out a way for them to get the help that they need? And then that way, they can help out this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Do you want to repeat the question for me?
I absolutely can. If you could only focus on one thing, what do you believe is Fargo's biggest need at this moment?
So I think that the biggest need we have is our workforce shortage. I think it's so important that we look at what we can do with some of these resources that we have available to us, but also that we need to, it's a multifaceted approach where we need to involve the collaboration with the government businesses, educational institutes, and the community organizations to really make that work for us. And I think investing in education is a good start. And supporting immigration and diversity can't hurt our cause, you know? And I think with a diverse city, we really need to bolster that up and really show what we can offer here in Fargo as a community, the diversity that we have, and really help grow our workforce. I think we could do recruitment and retention strategies that we could talk with businesses about and specifically look at what we could do for them for that. That is just one idea I have.
Thank you. Al?
I don't think there's any question in my mind that public safety is really a problem. And when I listen to the news at night and find out all the different things that have happened around our community, we need to address that. It's a budget item. It's a leadership item. I don't have, as a non-commissioner, the ability to dig into the budget of the police department, or how it's run, or where their people are being centered. But when you see articles of businesses closing because they can't afford to have security to protect them, or a guy downtown getting his head kicked in, those are important things. Our people need to be safe in their neighborhoods. They need to be safe when they send their kids to school. They need to be safe downtown walking to a restaurant. And I think there's something amiss there. Even though the statistics say our crime is going down, I find that very hard to believe. And we need to tighten our belts, and we need to prioritize, and we need to make public safety a bigger priority.
Thank you. Arlette?
The one thing I would work on is housing. And I mentioned it a little bit in my opening statement, but housing is common to the mental health, chemical dependency issues. It's common to the homelessness issues, and certainly to workforce. So, you know, building a new house today, it costs about $375,000 to $400,000. You add the specials on top of that, and it gets to be $450,000 to $500,000. Unfortunately, it's gotten out of reach for a lot of people. Granted, houses on the market are both new homes as well as old homes, but we don't have enough inventory for people who are in that middle income kind of segment of our population. So that's the challenge. And that's the thing that I would spend my time working on and have, and will continue to.
Thank you. Delson, we will start with you for this next question. Some people believe that the bars should close earlier, especially on weekends, and that bartenders need better training. And some people think that there should be less regulation on businesses. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, well, last, we had our last forum. I just found out that we, it's 50% cheaper for liquor licenses within the downtown area. And as Anna said, and John has mentioned a few times, alcohol is a big issue. We need to, with the liquor board authority, it's kind of like the Wild by West where we're just giving out a bunch of liquor licenses. And it should just be a little bit more stricter on the requirements to get a liquor license. I'm all for small businesses. We just need to find out a better strategy when it comes down to the downtown scene. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Yeah, I think that I'm going to say something unpopular, as, you know, everybody loves drinking in our city. It's, we're so proud of our ranking and when we're the drunkest city, you know? And some people are like, "Yeah, that's great." And I don't think that's something we should be super proud of when we have so many problems around that situation downtown that we're not looking at. And I do think that we could review what time the bars close. Do we need to have all of these young, college-age individuals out until 2:00 in the morning on those streets? It is not these people that you see downtown that are causing the problems all the time. They're not the ones getting into the fights outside of the bar. It's the college-age kids. It's everybody who's going to have a good time. And yeah, I do think that the staff needs to be getting more trained and that we do need to have more accountability for the bartenders over-serving and all of those things because all of that is to save the children and to be safe in our community.
Thank you. Al?
You know, there's lots of laws on the books about who can buy alcohol, what are the consequences if you get picked up for DUIs and all these things. But there is a part of this that nobody talks about, and that's an individual responsibility. We cannot legislate or we cannot have an ordinance for everything. Should the police be involved? Absolutely. Should there be closer scrutiny as to who's getting these liquor licenses? And there should be, and there are penalties in place. If they are violating these rules, serving to minors, over-serving somebody who's already drunk, then those things, there should be consequences for that. So we need to enforce what we have because there are plenty of laws out there already.
Arlette?
So the Liquor Control Board has actually started to implement some things that I think will help. One is background checks, regular background checks on both owners and managers. Yes, that also should include additional training, which de-escalation training has just been put in place. And it should be a requirement. I don't believe it is a requirement at this point, but it should be. You know, I think the biggest issue downtown is the density of the number of liquor licenses and liquor establishments. When you put a whole bunch of bars together, they start competing against each other. And it's easy to walk from one bar to another, and difficult then for servers and managers to keep a handle on how much people are actually taking in. So there's some things that we need to do to address that. We haven't done it at this point, but certainly something that needs addressing.
Thank you. John?
It's really good we're having this conversation. People in public health would say you're dancing around this elephant in the room. But we can't dance around it forever. And yet, we need a thriving community and a thriving downtown. When I moved my business to downtown Fargo in 1997, it was dismal downtown. There was nothing. And we've had a resurgence of our downtown in a way that it's an entertainment district. And my newspaper was part of that culture, music and bars and entertainment and activities and things to do. But on the other side of that, back before Fargo emptied out, the bars were around the periphery of our downtown because the downtown was full. So we've had a really major shift that we've filled the downtown with bars. The last liquor license that came before us across the street from Commissioner Preston, I voted against it because there's bar after bar after bar. And I respect these owners. I work with them a lot. I think they're terrific investors in our community. But we need to all be responsible and look for the greater good and the health of the people.
Thank you. And we're going to start with you for this next question. We do have a unhoused population here. And I think someone mentioned the Housing First initiatives and taking a look at that. Can you tell us what you see as what the city and what you as a commissioner could do to help our unhoused population?
Well, what I really see is a housing problem. It's not a homeless problem as much as a housing problem. And I think that we have to really look at what that means. And, you know, Housing First, I was here in the chambers when we had the guy from Milwaukee come in, and he had a lot of good points, statistics and research and facts. And if you can take a city like that and bring it from 200 homeless to like 17 in three years like he did, we can make magic happen here. I mean, we have the resources and we have the social services. Jan Alison is doing great work already downtown. And if we can just bolster that a little bit and help grow that a little bit, I think we could really be successful in helping the homeless population and unhoused. I do think that one of the things we really need to look at is the demographic of who those people are and what we need to do to service those individuals. Like recently, I found out that 44% of our homeless are Native Americans. What is that about? What can we do to service them, to help those people find those services?
Thank you. Al?
You know, the homeless issue is a tough one, but you have to figure out where you're going to put these people and which neighborhood. I've heard a lot of things that have come before the city, and they say, you know, everybody wants to find a place to house them until it's in their neighborhood, and then they would prefer they not be there. So there are empty buildings. The city has some responsibility, but it's a partnership. It should be a partnership between some of all of the great nonprofits we have in this town who focus on mental health, who focus on feeding the homeless, and focus on those things. The city should be partnering with those people. And if we do that, the state has programs, the cities has programs, West Fargo, all of, we should all be working together because these people come from somewhere. They don't just come all from Fargo. They come from somewhere. And we need to get our heads together as a group and say, how do we lift them from the homeless to being a productive part of our society? And that should be our end goal when we're done. Not just provide a food and place for them to stay warm, but how do we move them out of that strata?
Thank you. Arlette?
So the last answer really leads into that whole issue of case management. We have a model in Milwaukee and what they did, and we can follow that. It's pretty well proven, as Anna mentioned. The numbers there are real impressive. One of the issues is housing inventory, for sure. We need to be able to identify places where individuals who are chronically unhoused can actually get admitted and can live in a space. Part of that could be accommodated and actually administered by the city. It's called a master lease program. That's one of the items. The other most important issue is case management, wrapping services around these individuals so that they can begin to learn to live again inside four walls. Individuals that are chronically unhoused have difficulty adjusting into that. So those are some of the issues.
Thank you. John?
When I was new to Fargo this last time, I've been here three times, in 1998 or so, there was an incident in Fargo that I think was a tipping point for us. On March 8th, if I recall, Olivia White Lightning, a Native American woman in town, showed up at a shelter, knocked on the door and asked for assistance to get in. Times are different then. She was refused service, sent out into the weather, and the next day, we found her frozen to death. This was a moment for us to decide, we never want to ever have this ever happen again. You know, the housing homeless issue is one of my portfolios. I'm very close to it. Today, we met with executives from the Bloomberg Institute to try to figure out how they can come and help us in Fargo. But a long story short, it's everywhere. It's every community. It's everybody. And it takes a whole community to take care of each other. You know, when we have evictions, when we have joblessness, when we have people living in poverty, when we have people battling addictions, people battling these struggles, we have to all pay attention to what's going on and give them a hand.
Yeah, I mentioned Housing First, the Housing First Initiative earlier in my, I believe, first question. But as, what's going on here is that we're giving a plan. We're giving a plan from a Milwaukee consultant that came here a couple months ago. And we can have all plans. We can have the best plans that we want, but there's no execution. And what are we doing? As Al said, as John said, we have to figure out a way to start. I mean, we just simply have to take first step. Yes, and it does take everyone. It takes law enforcement, it takes small businesses, nonprofit, community partners, local government. Everyone has to pitch in, and that's how we do it. But once again, we can say that we're going to do something, and if nothing ever happens, what are we doing? We have the blueprint. Yes, it's easier said than done, but I do believe that we just have to simply take first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Al, we'll start with you this round. As much as 60% of the housing stock in Fargo's older neighborhoods has been identified as in need of rehabilitation, sometimes even approaching a dilapidated state. As city commissioner, what policies and actions would you initiate to assure that Fargo's housing stock is adequately maintained?
Well, I've maintained for years that the, there's certain neighborhoods that we have in Fargo where the houses are 120 years old, that sometimes they're beyond fixing. And we need to address those neighborhoods. Does that mean that we go in and we purchase those homes and then tear them all down and build affordable housing in those neighborhoods? I mean, you have to look at more options than what we have because it isn't always a matter of giving somebody a $50,000 loan to fix up a house that really shouldn't have $50,000 invested in it. So we need to address those core areas. And I think that's a perfect spot to look at over time for trying to move because there's less cost, there's less special assessments, and it allows us to move first-time home buyers into the houses that may be even more affordable. So we need to look at those neighborhoods that have really aged, where things need to be either torn down or redone. And the city needs to work with the Housing Finance Agency out of Bismarck, with any other agencies that are willing to work with us, Fargo Housing Agency, and find plans and programs to help with that, not to give it free, but to help with it.
Thank you. Arlette?
So the core neighborhood, the housing inventory inside the core neighborhoods are truly the first homebuyer kind of homes that individuals can purchase because they are, they tend to be works in progress. One of the things that the core neighborhood plan had identified, and we're very slowly moving into it, talk about plan had identified and we're very slowly moving into it, talk about execution of plans. This has been taking a little too long. And that is the Housing Rehab Fund. That would be a fund that would be available for individuals to rehab a home. And I would caution against tearing down all of the the homes that that may look like they're becoming dilapidated. We really need to try to preserve and get in front of this instead of wait until they're so totally destroyed that it's difficult to rehab them. So the Housing Fund would be a major initiative to try to turn that around.
Thank you. John?
I would suggest we all look at the Roosevelt neighborhood up around NDSU. We have a declining student population. Seven I hear I hear as much as 77% of those bungalow type homes or small homes are rentals, and they're going into a state of blight. And then we have apartments being built next to the periphery of NDSU, which further empties those houses out. What we have here is an opportunity if we decide to look at it that way. Taking all these homes, coming up with incentives and encouraging people to take over ownership, helping them rehab the homes, moving into their neighborhoods with their families and their kids and populating the Roosevelt School and the Horseman School up there. That's good neighbor policy. The other side of that is if we don't address this blighting neighborhood, what's what's where are we going to end up with in a while? It's really not pretty, you know. So and then we're going to have a we just need to. And we get to, and we can show people how to do that.
Thank you. Delson?
Yeah, you look at Roosevelt, you look at Jefferson, you look at Golden Ridge. I grew up in the Golden Ridge neighborhood. And speaking of the core neighborhood plan, I mean, that was one of the biggest issues they had is preventive care and maintenance. So how do we we're giving all these incentives to these new new houses, and that's fine too. But how why don't we give them to these older neighborhoods and help build them up? And also, if you look at the Golden Ridge and if you look at the Jefferson community, you realize a lot of them are New Americans. And they come from all different different places. Some of them, they just may not know what's going on. So this is a good way for us to educate them and then give them the resources for them. Because I my dad's been here for 30 years and he still I mean, his English is all right. But for the most part, I don't think he really understands what's really going on and what resources he has to fix up his place. So if we really went in there and facilitated and give them the resources and educate them, I think a lot more people would understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Jesus, by the time it gets to me, I forget what the question was.
Yes. As much as 60% of the housing stock in Fargo's older neighborhoods has been identified as in need of rehabilitation and sometimes even approaching a dilapidated state. As a city commissioner, what policies and actions would you like to see to assure that Fargo's housing stock is adequately maintained?
Well, I think supporting incentives for some of this revitalizing these core neighborhoods is important because it can stimulate the growth and the community development. And also, it helps with attracting investors to our area, right? And also creating jobs. We also it can it can revitalize those communities that we're talking about that really need it. And and it's essential. It's essential for our city to consider to consider these design and implementations of incentives. But it's also important that they that we ensure that they're cost effective and they align with our with our beliefs.
Thank you. Arlette, we will start with you for this round. The past couple of years, we, if everyone remembers, have been kind of dry and smoky and there's been fires to the north of us. Luckily, we haven't had fires break out here. But we have some folks that are worried about our fire planning. And tell us, what are your thoughts?
About our fire planning? Is that?
Do we have any extreme fire disaster mitigation plans? Is there a planned fire break to the west? Do we think we have enough pumping power to bring extra water into the fire plug system? This is from a person who grew up in a fire, fire prone state. So they're probably we should probably talk to them maybe. I don't.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we've had some dry years, so I understand the question. You know, I think from a fire prevention firefighting perspective, the Fire Department has taken a real aggressive stance in making sure that we do have the water pressure as well as the engineering and the water staff, the water department staff. We're building new water towers when we need them and pumps put in the system to assure that that pressure is there when we need it. The Fire Department has actually been recognized, I think, pretty highly for the response that they have. I think it's under, I think it's seven minutes or something like that. And they they are really close to meeting those goals. I think it's less than seven minutes, actually. So from the firefighting side, I think we're really pretty good.
Thank you. John?
When this question surfaced, my head went to public health and to personal health. You know, people who have COPD and have trouble with breathing and so on. But it's way it's more than that. And it's good to hear from somebody who's been through that because one thing we understand in Fargo is how to prepare for a flood. But we don't know how to prepare for some of these other things because we don't have that regular experience with it, like like bad quality air where you go outside and you're hacking and you can't breathe it, you know, type stuff. But I'll go I'll say a couple of things that might not be real popular. This is climate change stuff to a degree also. And nobody wants to say those words. Part of why I fought for the diversion settlement was we have to be prepared for floods. And we were going to be tied up in court and not have a project if we didn't get past that federal lawsuit. You know, when we droughts, right now, we were bringing water in from the western part of the state to counter the dry spells. Air quality is going to be another one of these things all tied to climate. We have to take and make it climate a priority for the people's sake.
Thank you. Delson?
Bailey, can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. This person is way smarter about fires than I am. So do we have any extreme fire disaster mitigation plans? Or do you have plans should you be elected? Is there a plan for a permanent fire break to the west? Is there enough pumping power to bring extra water into the fire plug system? Can we be sure the extra water access will be available in the future for extreme heat and dry periods?
Those are deep questions. So I do not have enough knowledge in that area. But as a, you know, if I was elected, I believe that let's all sit down at the table and let's figure this question out together. So yeah, just showing humility, you know, I don't know everything, but this is where we come in as the citizens and the leaders, and we make sure we figure something out if this is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Yeah, I wish I had a good answer for that, right? Like, I think in this day and age and in the state we live in, that we have climate and environmental issues every day. Like, you look at the weather we're having in the winter, we're not having, or the rain we're getting a lot of, that's great, or not getting. And the fires in Canada are real. We're really close to that. So it is something that we should have a plan for. And I do think that is something to have a conversation about. And like he said, I don't I don't have all the answers either. And I would like to sit down and have some of those conversations with the fire chiefs and kind of get to an understanding of what we can do to prevent these huge disasters in our city.
Thank you. Al?
You know, the now that the diversion is being built, I think our biggest concern should be what happens if we do have this drought and the Red River is almost dry? Because that's where our water supply comes from. We get some through the Cheyenne that we get pumped over and that Ashtibula is our reservoir. When I was in the legislature, we put the first dollars in at the state level for the Red River water supply. So if there's anything that should be a major concern for us, it should be to make sure that that continues to be available to us so that we can get that water supply to the valley when we need it, when we are in those drought conditions. I remember when Dennis Wallaker came to the state and he and I and he said, we need two things. We need diversion and we need water. I said, which one do you pick? He says, I want the diversion. Well, the second one didn't go away in its importance. It's very important to Fargo. We need to keep our eye on the ball there to make sure that gets completed. So we do have the water when it's time to fight those fires.
Thank you. John, we'll start with you this round. Recently, the High Plains Fair Housing Center reported that patterns of racial segregation are in Fargo neighborhoods. And they also noted that segregated communities are often targeted by slum landlords and underserved by public amenities such as parks. And they often get trapped in a cycle of segregation. As city commissioner, what policies and actions would you initiate to prevent patterns of racial segregation here?
I was the one who put that on the agenda, to have Michelle Ritz from the High Plains Housing share that information with us. And I'll couch it with the overview. We're a changing, evolving community. Ninety some languages spoken here in our community. So and then we have pockets of like you're mentioning, the pockets of people. Where my head went when I was hearing that information first presented at the Human Rights Commission was relative to one person, one vote. We're in an ongoing discussion about what type of government would be ideal for Fargo in the moment present and future. Is it a commission form of government or a council form of government? If you have a council form of government, you have wards and districts. In my head, if that's the issue, we have pockets of demographics that won't otherwise get elected at an at large election, but could in their neighborhood. I think that's a compelling reason to study wards and districts as a future form of government.
Thank you. Delson?
Yeah, I mean, as we continue to grow, we can do mixed unit development. You know, I keep talking about the older neighborhoods, the Jeffersons, Golden Ridge neighborhoods. But if you take a walk through there, and my parents live in the Golden Ridge neighborhood, and I was just there last week, but you do see a lot of there's a lot more older homes. Some are blighted. But, you know, just moving forward, mixed used, mixed unit developments. And, you know, if this may be a little tough for some people, but a renter registry could be another option, you know, and we it'll be tough for some landlords. But, you know, that's where we set the precedent, like, hey, this this has to happen. Otherwise, we're going to keep having this segregation going on within the city. And yes, it's going to be tough at first, but anything new is a little tough at first, and you just move on. So thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
So recently, we had a forum with the Builders Industry Association, formerly the Home Builders Association. They just changed their name. And one of their questions was kind of like this, and it brought up inclusionary zoning, which really promotes the socioeconomic diversity within the neighborhoods. And especially now that we're seeing this segregation that we're seeing, that this could help promote some of that, to stop some of that segregation. And I think we need to look at that. And also, you know, some of these unpopular things that people are talking about, like with the registering the landlords and stuff, I think it's important that we hold landlords accountable for the raising the rates for the renters and keeping things affordable for the people who don't have houses. I don't know what the percentage is of people who aren't homeowners, but it's a lot more than there is of homeowners. And so we really need to take a look at that system and hold everybody accountable for it.
Thank you. Al?
You'd have to repeat that question for me, please.
Yes. Recently, the High Plains Fair Housing Center reported that patterns of racial segregation are here in Fargo neighborhoods. They also noted that segregated communities are often targeted by slum landlords and underserved by public amenities like parks. And this just cycles and gets worse and worse. As city commissioner, what what policies and actions would you initiate to prevent these patterns?
Again, I don't know. I know there's neighborhoods where there's different ethnic groups living in those neighborhoods. Maybe they want to live there because they want to be near people who speak the same language, who have the same values as they do. But landlords should always be held responsible for their actions and what they do. On the other hand, you can also tell them and have rent controls and say, you can't charge more than X amount of dollars, because pretty soon, they're just going to abandon the project if they can't have a reasonable return on their investment. So again, you need to encourage instead of discourage, you need to talk assimilation to our society, to our city. And hopefully, those kind of things will make some of these problems go away. It's a big issue. It's not an easy answer. But it's one you need, we need to look at, keep our eye on the ball, make sure they're treated fairly, just like every other citizen in the city of Fargo.
Thank you. Arlette?
Yeah, the data that Michelle presented was quite concerning in that this has happened in the last three decades, and it was a very clear progression. We really need to try to get in front of this before we find ourselves in a much worse situation. You know, I truly can't sit here and tell you what should be done to stop it. But I do think, and some of the points being brought up here point towards needing more information. We need to find out, are individuals choosing to live in a certain apartment building? Or are they being directed towards that building? And I know I've had stories told to me by friends that those apartment buildings, yeah, they need some maintenance that haven't been followed through on. So if we let this continue, we're going to be in a situation where people are in very vulnerable inadequate housing. So we need to sit down and figure out how to how to address that.
Thank you. Delson, you will take this next one first. And this is a more this gives you an opportunity to talk a little bit more about this rental registry that a couple of you brought up. As city commissioner, would you support a rental registry for all multifamily rental units in the core neighborhoods?
Yes, I listen. And Al said that it'll discourage some people. But then we're having these issues and nothing's getting fixed. I mean, there are many slum lords out there. And if we don't have, and I don't think it would discourage them, we can, as long as we give them an opportunity to force out their opinions as well, we can all come to the table and work together. But if we don't do anything for for the citizens, that's that has these slum lords, and what are we doing? As a I know plenty of friends that has property out there. And once again, with any new changes, there's going to be a little pushback. But if we don't do anything, then we're not we're not helping out the community as well.
Thank you. Anna?
So one of the things that I'm hearing with these with the comments that we're getting back from these answers is naiveness. Racism exists. Okay, racism exists in our city and we need to stop acting like it doesn't. If we don't hold these landlords accountable, it will never change, ever, period, point blank, period. Like, I do not know why we're even having this conversation when we all know what the problem is. Racism exists in our city and we need to stop acting like it doesn't. The color of your skin matters and where you live matters. And yes, like Al said, it could be because they want to live together. Wouldn't you rather live with other people that care about you and your community because they look like you? But is that a forced situation because they can't afford to live somewhere else because of the slum lords, because of the racism? We cannot be blind to something we see every day.
Thank you. Thank you. Al?
You know, I don't have enough information to tell you. When you look at police reports or if you look at the condition of buildings from the Building Inspection Department, who is not taking care of their properties? Are they overcharging on their rent? Are they not properly taking care of the tenants when they have concerns? Those are the kind of things you need to look at. I'm not sure I agree that Anna says how racism is such a great problem. Maybe it is, and maybe it's in certain neighborhoods. But most of the people that I deal with that have apartment buildings and things are very glad to have good quality tenants. And if they can pay the rent, they don't they don't have problems with that. So I'd need a lot more information before I were telling telling you that that we have an instant solution for this. Do we have a lot of slum lords? I'm not sure about that. I don't think so. But there might be some. And those bad actors have to bring their their buildings up to code and deal with those kind of things. And if they're not being good actors, we've got to fix it.
Thank you. Arlette?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. As city commissioner, would you support a rental registry for the multifamily rental units? units?
Yes, in fact, I introduced the topic probably about two years ago, and it got voted down. Yes, there are definitely slum lords in town, and yes, we do have inadequate, unsafe housing situations that really need to be watched much more closely, and that's what a rental registry program would do. It also establishes a standard that's a little bit higher probably than what we're currently seeing. And Grand Forks has a rental registry program in place, and they saw just an automatic increase in the standard of the housing just because of the registry program existence. And that was without any kind of strong enforcement. It was just talking about it, raised the expectation. So it is an effective way to deal with, and a lot of these are single-family homes that are being converted into multifamily, and the city doesn't even know that they exist.
Thank you. John?
Commissioner Preston did advance this proposal to the city, and she and I were the only two who voted for it. And, 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 and I'll qualify this further. Not much later, or maybe around that time, the North Dakota Legislature came very close to preempting cities from having rental registries. The legislature in Bismarck, saying Fargo shouldn't be able to do this. You know, there was an immense pushback from the notion of rental registries. Bear in mind, let's qualify this. Almost 60% of our population lives in apartments. You know, so if, we need to watch out for their, 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 their conditions they're living in. We need to watch out and pay attention to, are their landlords delivering what they say they will? Are, are, is it affordable? Is it reasonable? You know, there, there's just a real need for tracking the safety and the health and the, the space that people are living in. And we, we've done this for dilapidated homes. We've sent our inspection department after old homes to tear them down. We need to do the same similarly, to step up the safety in our apartments and, and require it.
Thank you. Anna, we'll have you start this round.
I'll take a nice, easy question, please. Thank you.
This one is a little bit easier. Well, maybe not. People have really good questions. I'm really glad. I'm so happy that so many people are invested in this city. And again, thanks everyone for sending these questions and for showing up here and, and viewing at home. This is still on our track of housing. Apparently, that's an important topic. This is more about the sidewalks and transportation. A lot of sidewalks are just, especially in certain neighborhoods, are just crumbly and not super safe, especially for folks that aren't fully able-bodied and maybe need to use wheelchairs or other devices. What are your thoughts? What can we do for transportation and, and safe walking?
Well, I think we need to invest in that stuff for sure. And our transportation system we have here is great. We need to invest in it more so it's better, right? So that we can get access to more places now that our city is growing. We need to be able to invest in more bus drivers. And this is one of those things that's a little bit closer to my heart, because I used to be a city bus driver, that's kind of where I started. So I kind of see, like, we started off small, and we've grown so much, and we've done so much, and we can keep growing and getting better. So I think transportation is almost there, we just need a little bit more. And with the sidewalks, there's a lot of problems there, and I think we need to really go and look at what those look like and like do a whole city assessment on that. Because if we're requiring new, new builds to build sidewalks and curbs and all of that, then we really need to be looking at the old neighborhoods and making sure they're up to code and safe, and for people with wheelchairs and people who need to walk. And our population doesn't all drive, and we need to really take that into consideration when we think about stuff.
Thank you. Al?
I remember the debates where, do we have city sidewalks on both sides of the street? Or do we have it on one side of the street? Make it more accessible for people. I can tell you that a lot of the parts of town, they've been, they've redone all the curbs, and they put in the handicap accessible, there's a dip in that sidewalk so that people are, it's more, it's easier for them to get across the street. We always want to make sure that we, we make Fargo a safe, walkable city. And whether it be with a wheelchair or walking, that costs money. Then we have people saying, "Well, gosh, don't put it on my specials." You know, "I'd really like it, but I don't put it on my specials." But somebody's got to pay for it. So yes, we should continue to make sure that our mass transit is done so that people are actually riding it, and it's getting them to the places they want to be and the times they want. And is it safe for me to walk on those streets and curbs? If it's a bad sidewalk with uneven concrete, the city should step in and take care of things like that and make sure it's done. Somebody has to pay, and it'll probably be specials.
Thank you. Arlette?
I'm going to answer this question in a slightly different way and talk about the whole issue of walkability. Yes, sidewalk maintenance is an important part of that. There is attempts in the community here, as we're, we're going through a growth planning process. And with that, we're talking about what makes an ideal neighborhood. An ideal neighborhood is one that's safe and healthy, promotes healthiness, and active transportation, whether it be walking, biking, skateboarding, whatever, is, is a large part of that. So having sidewalks that are maintained well is part of that, but also the design of the neighborhood. A person should be able to walk to the grocery store and get groceries if they need to. At least a carton of milk. Should be able to go to a, a coffee shop and meet, meet a friend. So those are the kinds of things that we're talking about, working into new neighborhood design. But we also need to incorporate that into the older neighborhoods as well. So yes, sidewalk maintenance is an important part of that.
Thank you. John?
I hear the voice of Bruce Brovold, and I hear the voice of Keith Bjornson. These are two advocates we had who reminded us on an ongoing basis for years. Pay attention to those of us who can't mobile, get down the sidewalks. You know, in winter, we have moments where, places where there's snow removal, there's no snow removal. They go to the events downtown at the Fargo Theater, they can't park and can't get into the sidewalk. We, we're just not cognizant of what challenges people who are facing disabilities and ability issues are, you know, what they face. You know, so it's, in my head, you know, this is just, I lived in Rochester, New York. One time I moved away from North Dakota, I lived in Rochester, and they had, they get a lot of snow, and they did something pretty phenomenal there. Every time there was snow, there's army of people would come out and clean every single public sidewalk in the city. That was really something for the people who had mobility issues and needed to use those sidewalks. I wish we could do that here, but at a minimum, hold them responsible, make them shovel their sidewalks and repair them for those who need them.
Thank you. Delson?
Bailey, can you repeat that question?
I sure can. A lot of our sidewalks, especially in some of the older neighborhoods, are crumbling. There's also not always the best transportation for folks that don't have a car or need to use wheelchairs and other mobility aids. What, what, what are your plans to help out with those, those things that people need?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, as John was saying, I mean, we definitely have to focus on those old neighborhoods and make sure that everyone has the ability to get to the bus stops and have well-maintained sidewalks. But it comes down to who's going to pay for it. And most likely, it's going to come from special assessments. So if they're okay with it, let's, let's get to it. But once again, someone has to pay for it. And we, I'm all for, I'm all for improving those old neighborhoods, just that. We're, we're going to have to pay for it, probably through special assessments, so thank you.
Thank you. Trying to time this right here. Let's, let's move to closing statements. Did I start with you, Anna, this last time?
Yes.
Al, would you please hit us with your closing statement?
Well, again, thanks for having us here. I, this is a job interview for two spots open on the city commission. You know, I think I have the skill set between what, my leadership skills and the business skills that I've developed over the years to be a good city commissioner. I'm a problem solver. I'm also a budget hawk. I spent a lot of years making sure that billion-dollar budgets were balanced and they were scrutinized, and I think that's important. Because there was a lot of programs tonight talked about, a lot of things talked about that cost money. How are you going to pay for them? You know, those are the kind of tough questions you have to ask. I will create good public policy, make good decisions, and I'll also make sure I'm a good steward of your freedoms, not only your freedoms, but your checkbook. Things will balance. We have a great city. I want to be part of it. I have the time, the energy, and the ability, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to help take Fargo into the, into the future. And making some of these things that were talked about realities and to scrutinize and be good stewards for our citizens.
Thank you. Arlette?
First of all, I want to thank the League and AARP and Hawthorne Neighborhood Association for hosting this. I just want to say, with my public and private experience, I'm well-prepared to serve for another four years. And the city is in, really right in the middle of a number of large initiatives, which will require some seasoned leadership. I'm running for reelection to bring all those initiatives to their completion and implementation. Also, personally, I am a mother, a nurse, former business owner, and experienced community leader. I'm ready to continue to work on these initiatives that are so important for our community. I am asking for your support, for your vote, and if you want some more information, you can go to arletforfargo.org, all spelled out. And again, thank you for coming, for listening in, and thank you for hosting.
Thank you. John?
Again, thanks to the League and all your partners for putting this on, and, and nobody should think this is fun and easy. It's, it's really nerve-wracking to, to, to do this type of a job interview. I'll start with, it's, it's incredibly humbling to serve the people, you know, and, and that's our job, is to serve the people. I grew up in a little town, and I tell folks, my best example of leadership was at home. A good leader to me is a mom who can tell seven kids, "You're not going to fight at the dinner table." And they don't even dare fight at the dinner table. You know, a good leader is somebody who sees opportunity and, and future for everybody. You know, lots of mothers do that. When my mom was mayor of my hometown of Crystal, she ran it like a family. She treated everybody like family members, and there's something to that. So you know, the last thing I'll say is, everywhere we look lately, people are fighting. There's fight in their eyes, there's fight in every discussion. I, I'd like, I wish I could emulate my mom, just let's put the fight aside and go forward.
Thank you. Delson?
Yeah, first of all, I'm just thank you for having us and thank you for posting this, or thank you for hosting this. I, I love what Al says all the time, and this is a job interview, and this is the time to pick two best candidates. But let's take a step further. A lot of us have great plans, but what happens is that there's no execution. And that's where I've, I feel that I've excelled a lot in my leadership opportunities that I've been given. And secondly, as John was saying, this is not easy. But I also encourage, this is for next election, but I encourage everyone to go out there to, and I've been told, you know, this is courageous that you're doing this, but no, there's plenty of people that are smarter than me, plenty of people, there's plenty of great leaders out there. Next election, go out there, put your name. But yes, go for me on June 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
So, thanks. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for everybody being here and all of our, our hosts and the, and the League. Representation matters, and it matters because it validates people's existence and their experiences. It fosters inclusivity. It challenges stereotypes, and it provides role models for individuals who may feel marginalized or underrepresented. And when people see me, I don't think they immediately think truck driver. But what I hope they think is Anna Johnson loves Fargo and wants to see it thrive. I'm proud to be the first Native American to run for city commission, and I hope to represent a previously upper, underrepresented population of Fargo as their newest Fargo city commissioner, and thank you so much.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for tonight. Thank you so much to these candidates for running and participating in democracy in this way. We absolutely need folks like you to do this. I also want to thank everyone who showed up here tonight, and I know lots of folks are watching at home, and thank you for paying attention to us in, in your living rooms and your kitchens. And again, our volunteers, very, very well done, everyone. Thank you so much. And, and our sponsors, AARP and Hawthorne Neighborhood Association. Again, thank you so very much. June 11th, don't forget to vote. You can find your polling location, or a polling location, at vote411.org. That will be published tomorrow. And again, thank you to all of these candidates for filling out the questionnaire. I'm truly, really proud of you, and thank you so much for getting that done. Make sure you vote, June 11th. I know it's kind of, it's the primary, but that's also when these local races get decided is, is in the primaries. So June 11th is when we need to vote. This concludes our, our forum tonight. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.